They take a lot of pride off.
And there's your side.
Please.
It's just funny coming up.
Yes, it's very difficult.
I did say that you had great people.
Okay, relax.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Relax.
Everyone said. All right, so absent a gavel, I'll just bang my fingers. So I will call the order of the Salem Planning Commission for July one, twenty twenty five. And Jennifer, if you would call our role, please.
Commissioner Fa.
Here.
Commissioner Fryback.
Here.
Commissioner Heller is absent. Commissioner Laura Midkiff.
Here.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Here.
Commissioner Slater.
Here.
Commissioner Tev. Commissioner VR Brindell.
Here.
We have Quorum.
All right, thank you. Before we go on to the consent calendar, is there one, anyone here who would like to speak to the planning commission about something that is not on the agenda? All right, in that case, I will look for a motion on the minutes, please. That would be you, Commissioner Laura Midkiff. Very good. Is there a second? A second? All right. Is there any questions or discussions? Mr. Fryback?
Um, I would like to, um, make amendments to the minutes, um, session. He hears a report. I was talking to Laura, Commissioner Laura Midkiff and Tev of the regional scenario planning.
Doctor Midkiff got sent out. They are members of. So what was the addition that you would like adding in the words?
Yeah, let's see. Commissioner Fryback has been talking with the transportation subcommittee about the regional scenario planning.
Is that clear?
Yes.
Any other comments, questions, or additions? All right, uh, if you call the role again, please.
Commissioner Fa.
Hi.
Commissioner Fryback.
Hi.
Commissioner Heller. It's absent. Commissioner Laura Midkiff.
Hi.
Um, Commissioner Slater is abstaining. Commissioner Rhodes. Commissioner Tev.
Hi.
Commissioner VR Brindell.
Hi.
Hey, passes. All right, we have no resolutions, but we do seem to have an action item, an advisory appointment. I assume you were going to be talking about that, didn't I, Miss?
Yes, right. Yes, Miss Kim asked. We have one with her daughter for her birthday. Um, and I think we've had a couple presentations, so we have the goal by Marion Advisory Committee. Uh, you know, it's talked about at the last meeting. Mr. Heller's already on the committee. It's not met yet, going slow. I need time in charge of it. Um, and after they started looking at it, they're like, actually, we would like two planning commissioners, which is great, because that's what I wanted to get. Well, no, and Commissioner Tev has volunteered and yes, so if the planning commission agrees, then we just need a motion to appoint Commissioner Tev to join the committee. The Commissioner Heller's idea.
All right, moved by Commissioner Fa. Could I get a second? Second by Commissioner Laura Midkiff. Are there any questions or discussions? Stowe, would you like to say anything about your qualifications or interest in this appointment?
Um, need to say too much. Uh, look back at our interview in the winter. But, uh, yeah, I just, I work directly with Whatlens, uh, for my day job. I worked with Whatlens for all of my day jobs, uh, of my career. And, um, have an interest in our, uh, our, is it goal five, um, goals.
Any questions? Uh, right, again, you can call the role, please.
Commissioner Fa.
Hi.
Commissioner Fryback.
Hi.
Commissioner Laura Midkiff.
Hi.
Commissioner Slater.
Hi.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Hi.
Commissioner Tev.
Hi.
Commissioner VR Brindell.
Hi. All right, motion passes. Do we need a swearing in ceremony? No, all right, then we can move right on to public hearings. And I believe we have a criteria that needs to be read. Oh, I got it right this time.
This is a public hearing to consider case number CPC NPC ZZ twenty five oh one for property located at three seven six seven and three seven eight seven Fairview Industrial Drive Southeast. The criteria applicable to this hearing are listed in the Salem Revised Code under chapters sixty four point zero to five E dash two, Plan Map Amendments and twenty six point fives and two six, two sixty five point zero zero five E one quasi judicial zone changes. Failure to raise an issue prior to the close of the public hearing with statements or evidence sufficient to afford the planning commission and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the land use board of appeals on that issue. A similar failure to raise constitutional issues relating to proposed conditions of approval precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Prior to the conclusion of the hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony. The planning commission will then either continue the public hearing or leave the record open for at least seven days.
Hey, very good. I'm New York best.
Good evening, planning commission. I'm Jacob Brown, current planner two with City Salem Planning Division. I would like to enter into the record the staff report, all attachments in this presentation for the comprehensive plan amendment, plan map amendment, neighborhood plan change and zone change case number twenty five dash zero one. The applicant, Lift Architecture, on behalf of the property owner, Angel Share LLC, is requesting a minor comprehensive plan amendment, neighborhood plan change and zone change for one property located at thirty seven eighty seven and thirty seven sixty seven Fairview Industrial Drive Southeast. The proposal is for a comprehensive plan designation change from industrial to industrial commercial and a zone change from IVC Industrial Business Campus to IC Industrial Commercial. Similarly, under the morning side neighborhood plan, the site is designated industrial, which requires a change to industrial commercial to match the proposed comprehensive plan change. The criteria for a comprehensive plan amendment and neighborhood plan change are the same. No other new development or additions to the existing buildings or changes to the properties are proposed with this application. The properties are comprised three point three four acres in size and located within the urban service area. As shown in this aerial of the site, the property abuts the west middle fork of Pringle Creek to the southwest and Fairview Industrial Drive Southeast to the north. Fairview Industrial Drive is classified as a minor arterial in the Salem Transportation Plan. The abutting properties northwest and southeast are composed of a variety of general offices, construction contractors, retail sales, and eating and drinking establishments. Across Fairview Industrial is currently a vacant lot and Oregon Department of Emergency Management and an Office of Information Services for Oregon. A variety of warehousing and distribution, general manufacturing uses occupy other sites in proximity to the subject property to the north. To the south and west is Fairview Park and residential development within the Fairview Mixed View Zone, which can be seen here. The subject property has a comprehensive plan designation of industrial, shown in gray. The south area is also mostly designated as industrial commercial, shown in purple. To the south are properties under ownership of City Asylum designated as public open space in the green here and Fairview Mixed Use Development designated as mixed use to the west. The property is zoned industrial business campus, shown in pink here, with adjoining properties with frontage on to Fairview Industrial Drive Southeast, being zoned as industrial commercial, which is the purple. Notice of this application and public hearing was provided to the Morningside Neighborhood Association and no comments were received. The properties are not located within the homeowners association and no comments were received from neighbor and property owners or tenants. No concerns were raised with other city departments or divisions and no comments were received from other public agencies. The proposal is consistent with the uses of land use pattern of the area. At the time of the Fairview Industrial Park Phase Two in nineteen eighty seven, the subject property and surrounding other properties were all similarly zoned as IVC Industrial Business Campus, starting in two thousand and seven with a comprehensive plan map and zone change later, land use case, uh, properties to the east and across Fairview Industrial Drive Southeast changed from industrial designation to the industrial commercial. Six similar cases have occurred, which have changed the surrounding properties to industrial commercial, uh, comprehensive plan designation. These changes have led to the area, uh, to be developed as more of a commercial and business park with light manufacturing industrial uses. Two properties directly abutting the subject development site include a wide range of industrial services, manufacturing, warehousing, distribution, offices, personal services, and recreation slash entertainment uses. The intent of the commercial comprehensive plan designation is to provide areas for a mixture of heavy commercial and light manufacturing and warehouse activities. The proposed designation is in, uh, is equally or better suited for the property by helping to promote a wider range of uses for an existing industrial property with an office, while creating additional consistency to the surrounding uses that are complement commercial and light industrial uses already within vicinity of the subject property. The properties are adequately served by city utilities and are already developed for industrial and commercial uses consistent with the proposed zone change industrial commercial and are in compliance with the comprehensive plan and statewide planning goals. In terms of the zone change, the applicant does not identify a mistake in the application of a land use designation to the property and does not identify a change in economic, demographic, or physical character of the facility. The proposal is justified on criteria three of the zone change criteria that the proposed zone change is equally or better suited for the property than the existing zone. To maintain a greater degree of development compatibility with the surrounding land use uses, staff recommends that the development standards of the IVC zone, which require a greater percentage of landscaping and greater required CFX than the IC zone, apply to future development of the subject property, which is condition one that is recommended. Lastly, the applicant's transportation planning role analysis indicated no significant impact to the transportation system. The TPR, uh, analysis demonstrates that the proposed comprehensive plan change and zone change will not have a significant impact on the transportation system if a trip cap is placed on the subject property. The applicant's TPR analysis proposed a trip cap of seven hundred and sixty one trips per day, a hundred and thirty three AM peak hours trips and a hundred and eleven weekday P, uh, PM peak hours trips. The Assistant City Traffic Engineer has reviewed the TPR analysis and concurs with the finding of no significant effect with condition two reflecting those limitations. Notice signs were required to be posted by the applicant on the site by June twenty first. However, per the applicant's affidavit of posting, the notice sign was in fact posted on June twenty fourth. As such, staff recommends to continue the hearing to July fifteenth, planning commission hearing date, to allow the full days of public notice posted. That concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions from the commissioners? No? All right, is there?
Commissioner Fryback.
Sorry. Uh, I was kind of wondering if you could give more clarification on this for the, uh, the conditions, uh, because it seems like those surrounding properties are relatively similar to each other.
Uh, the surrounding properties under their past zone changes also had similar conditions requiring that they meet IVC development standards uh, when they were zone changed. Some had a specific exhibit provided, while others did as amended. So as the UDC code is updated, that the IVC standards carry forth rather than having to be adjusted or, um, a variance be issued.
Did they also have that same trip cap requirement?
That they similarly have a TPR analysis and would have similar trip caps based on the the allotted area of the site and the development that was already established there or proposed to be there.
Thank you. Any other questions? Is the applicant speaking? No. All right, so I guess we just need a motion to delay the hearing.
Yeah, to continue it to the next meeting.
July fifteenth.
July fifteenth, so that way. So just for clarity, because it's been a while, like continuance means that there won't necessarily be a staff presentation, but Jacob will let you know if any additional good testimonies come in and then you will accept, uh, verbal testimonies. So if anybody were to come first or the out of them, let it speak and ask questions again. So it'd be kind of like part two of this.
But no staff presentation.
He wouldn't do the full presentation again, you know, concerned there's something for reading.
So we can ask questions and we'll deliver it at that time.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry to interrupt. Any questions about those course of action? No? Could I get a motion to lose that forward?
Yes.
I would do. Maybe they hear any comments.
All right, is there a second? Second, Fryback, any questions before we vote? All right, Jennifer, if you call the role, perhaps last time tonight.
Commissioner Fa.
Hi.
Commissioner Fryback.
Hi.
Commissioner Laura Midkiff.
Hi.
Commissioner Rhodes.
Hi.
Commissioner Slater.
Hi.
Commissioner Tev. Commissioner VR Brindell.
All right, motion passes. And now we are on to the administrative report.
There's some committee report.
Uh, thank you. Is there some paper? Nope. All right, there's no Whatlens Committee report. All right, so in that case, we are back.
Get your gap back. We're here to move on. There will be a gap. Of course.
Unforceful.
That is forceful, right? If you're like order.
That's not a party group.
Yeah. Um, okay, yeah, I wasn't at the last meeting, um, you was still in for me, but she did let me know, uh, Commissioner Laura Midkiff creates me terms of access. And listen, oh, I was supposed to find the commissioners to speak up or it's kind of hard to hear on the recording. So the only mic is on the camera, which it picks up pretty well, but, um, you know, we start to mumble and sometimes the thoughts you trail off kind of are hard to hear. I'm keeping that in mind. So, um, and for you, you know, Jen, if you didn't know the history of how we got to a hundred percent in person meetings. So, um, during the pandemic, we went every, like everybody did, we went on remote on Zoom. And then when the, and all city halls shut down for a very long time, few years, um, and then when we came back, it was and some people were in the office, some people worked, and we had the option to stay on Zoom or to come a hundred percent in person. Looking at you, you were on the commission, I don't know. Okay, so there was a discussion and it was sort of both like, no, we want to be back in person. We feel like maybe more people, um, um, and it just became better to be in person. So, so we've been in person ever since. Um, the reason we didn't do hybrid then and not done hybrid is staffing challenges. Um, you know, so Jen's doing the minutes, she's a roll call, the motions. Now she has to get up and unlock, open the door. Police won't allow it to ever be unlocked. Um, and, you know, trying to figure out, obviously tonight, nobody's here, but if it was one where there's a lot of testimony or something, a lot of people coming in, she'd have to run back and forth, try to help staff do that. Uh, separate from that, running the Zoom room, as I know from, um, COVID times, if there's people that are attending, besides commissioners, it's very time intensive, I will say. It seems fairly easy, but my experience has been, you know, there's a sign up, you have to sign up by three o'clock, so we know who you are. Well, people forget to sign up. There are emails and then, oh, no, Jen's not checking her email. She's just not checking her email. Nobody saw my email. How can I get in? Or someone, somebody shows up in the waiting room, we're like, a person didn't register, so we can chat with them. And it's like, oh, I registered, but no, I'm in my conference room with my team. I didn't register, you know? Or I didn't register, but I'm associated with the neighborhood association, so you have any conversation. Where are you letting them in? And then there's certain neighborhood association people that then spend the whole meeting trying to chat. Tell people about when can they talk? I have a point of order. Can I unmute? I have a question. Lisa, what about this? I know that was an accurate statement. Can I get her about, you know, it's just like constant. Um, and then there were some commissioners who also couldn't find the link at the time, and then they're blowing up everybody's email. And then he's emailing and then he's texting and, you know, and I'm not looking at my phone because I'm like, you know, in the meeting. Um, and, and so it's like a lot of chaos. So, uh, it can be done. Uh, I go to every council meeting, they have a dedicated staff person that just does Zoom. It's not even in miracle. And then they have a city reporter who only does the minutes, the motions and the votes. And then they have two people in the room that handle all the problems in the room. So right here, that aren't either of those. So they have a staff of four. So what we're talking about is having Jen do what like four people do. Now, they do have more people, more people coming, sometimes there's somebody there, um, more consistently, but it's still a lot kind of to manage. Commissioner Fryback, I remember here, and he was already out there waiting, he was flashing his light. I wanted to see, and Jen was trying to get the camera straight and Jacob had his back, you know, turned and, uh, but I had some teams, Jacob, and then jumped up. We're here to process it. So it's just a lot of, there's a lot going on to shift in this location. Um, the only other administrative staff we have is Zach, which I can't think of who's Matt Zach. So he staffs HLC hearings officer and then Jen does planning commission. And then when they're gone, they cover each other. Um, I think if we were going to offer the hybrid option, we want to do it for all three, because it seems weird to say like, oh, if your case got a field of planning commission, you could do it. You know, Portland, but we got to build hearing talks, are you going to drive down to Salem or what, you know? So that's five meetings a night or a month, keeping five meetings, um, that are just generally on the calendar, they don't get canceled. And so that's more overtime. They weren't necessarily expecting to be working five nights a month. And then we still have the problem about vacations. Zach's in Portugal right now for the month, so Jen's doing all his meetings, so we wouldn't have like two. Um, we do have a moratorium on overtime as part of our budget woes, which did not get lifted with the left. We had all managers meeting today. They're like, here's our new website. You still have a moratorium on overtime. So I can talk to the city manager, like you can make requests for exceptions and, and, you know, I'm happy to have that conversation with her and see, and then I have to kind of identify another backup person. I think, um, you know, part of the problem is we get somebody outside planning to do the Zoom room. They have to kind of understand a little bit about the land use process if they're going to keep first chatting, answer some questions. You know, it's not as like drives like. So I'm not sure that that person would be, um, I asked the staff meeting with planners, I want to start doing this. A lot of crickets. Also, just, you know, they do get paid for the admin staff, so that's like a higher, you know, version on, on our budget. Um, so, I mean, I'm not opposed to us having hybrid meetings. I think I would say during the pandemic, we got less, uh, involvement. I'd say people participation in our meetings dropped a wide bit during pandemic. I think it's more of a societal thing, but it really surprised me because I was like, oh, yeah, people don't have to drive down to the city hall. They'll be more, um, interested. Just kidding, but.
Do you feel that during the bar Salem project, though, the ability for Zoom involvement? When we were going through that process, I feel like there was a higher level of testimony from the public and demographics that we don't typically hear from.
Yeah, um, I think so, but that might have also been because you know, it's had been working with them for so long, but she really called them all up and said, contest by contest, but you know, I didn't hear the link and sign up, sign you sign up. So um, it's a little different, you know, for the land use cases. Some of ours has got like eight hundred people that's next to an apartment complex or it's really big property. Um, and even then, we still maybe don't get any comments, or sometimes we get a lot of comments, you know, I'm trying to think of this past maybe six months, I guess, maybe only the, the Parry Mills environment plans probably had the most kind of input we've had on the, on the land use. And I don't know if you remember, that was a little, you know, chaotic. And I was like, oh, you didn't sign up? And then they're asking a bunch of, they're telling me like, why, you know, there should be school there and not welcome people to Spines Town. Um, and, you know, so that just generally means people that are, um, participating through a land use case, it might be their first time and their only time. So they don't really understand the whole process, right? You know, how like, oh, basically. I have a question from the audience, and you're like, that's okay. That's not what I meant when I said our other question. Um, so it's just more kind of managing of that process. Um, I did send you an email, so the, the city attorney, just so everyone else knows, um, if you want to submit requests, we can give you remote access. We've joined when you need to as an AD accommodation. I know that wasn't maybe your, um, bigger kind of, uh, wish for the community to have that access. So, um, I'm happy to, like, you know, like you hear what the commission thinks. If you guys feel strongly, then I will go to the city manager and see what I can get done with no guarantees. I know last time there was a talk about a vote. You know, control staffing or budget, so it's, I don't know, you need a vote for me to tell city manager they voted versus they told me earlier. I mean, you know, Commissioner Laura Midkiff, do you want to offer any thoughts?
Yeah, and, and thank you, Lisa, for, uh, your comments, they were as good as they were.
I wanted to respond to you.
Appreciate that. Yeah, so anyway, broadly, I'll, I'll raise two things. One, I'm very conscious of, of budgetary constraints for the city. Uh, and second, uh, sympathetic to the challenges of staff and and, um, I think I stand why my points last time, uh, which are that, uh, I don't think that this commission is accessible and transparent and accountable, uh, to people in the way that other missions are at both at the city level and state levels and other regional governments insofar as, you know, if, if, if I can't be here in person, I can participate in governance decisions that affect me. And if I want to listen to it online, you can't hear what's being said to your earlier comment about, uh, voices being muted and hardly to hear, uh, I shared last time for President Slater wasn't here as well. I totally that when I was coming up to, to do this and about interviewing, I listened to yours where I'd like to hear the word before, yeah, that was shared. And I think that is not acceptable. Um, so, and I, I don't know, I, it's kind of, I didn't swear that circle. I don't know if I have a right information, other than I think it's a problem that we should think more critically about. Um, maybe two other comments that I, I would make partially last time or didn't make at all last time. One would be, I think this location is particularly problematic. Um, one, it's a police station.
Yeah.
Uh, people won't come for big reasons. Uh, may otherwise come. Two, um, it took like forty five minutes to walk from the bus station here last time. I'm honored that.
Yeah.
I'm not even in the heat. And i- if I don't walk it at all, and so, uh, I don't know if I can come here. I also know that there are other places that are much more accessible and have much better technology. I'm thinking about by, by horse people and kind of mission meets and cherry board meets and city boards meet now, now that we're no longer in state college, I'm on the support boards in the city that meet there. Um, very successful. There's a Dithyus and all and, uh, great audio. There are mics that speak into the audio and telegraphs out to the, to the public online. Better than this is a perfect room. Um, and so I think, I think, you know, I think the, the location and, and just the way that, and I think that there are either by way of changing location or other technological ways that might better equipped staff, there are things that I think. I'm responsible for the public and I will be, uh, strong support our efforts and identify those to try them out. Because I think that we and consequences being operating really who do is that we are one higher folks we buy like here from. And two, uh, you get folks like me who are enthusiastic to serve, but may not be able to for whatever reason. Uh, so I think those are things to be, to be mindful of, um, especially as we are interested in. I think that it's being as, as representative and kind of, of course, we can't. We should, uh, those are some of my broad reactions. So again, I, but they kind of, I appreciate and understanding, agree, but challenge from the.
Yeah, the location's a really, um, good one to talk about. We really struggled with where we're going to go. LAX is not available five nights a month. For us, where council is, we've had two council meetings there. I can tell you that they've all been very uncomfortable for various reasons. You have councils on stage. The first one, the department heads were on a stage. I was filling in, so I didn't know I was going to be on a stage, but I was very uncomfortable about, uh, they changed that. I don't know. Played about that. I've done, now there's a staff area in the audience and it's like weird and like all around you and mad at you if you're working with your, that's my job. There's a lot of problems with that. Um, we were going to be in the Anderson Rivers Library, which is where we have a lot of, uh, kind of meetings that are in chiefers. But the library closes early, closes before we're done, maybe. Um, and then the, and then the, yeah, exit the library, you can't use the elevator, you can't get up front. So that's, that's me. Especially in the winter, right? And if somebody comes to hearing and then it's like, now you're out in Plaza in the dark at eight and you parked over here and you've never been here before, that's just nightmare. Um, so then this is, this was built to be a cubany room and it has technology. Um, we were told that the city was not utilizing Marion County, uh, facilities, and we didn't want to give the impression that we were Marion County and therefore that was all. Because I can, council meetings could be a lot better in that building as well.
Well, we.
But now.
Human rights machine exists. So. Just like.
Well, happy to ask. It's a better location. I agree. This, this room is nice, but the has, uh, it has problems to get in and get to it. A locked part of it, so.
My, my own other. My my own other reaction to inspired by power, I'm emphasis, um, I appreciate, um. I don't believe in the challenges that I might be presenting. That was five years ago, and I I think, um, I would be surprised if. Everyone had degree of challenges going on online, I've been here five years. The same way that people. Kind of a general rule that I I would be surprised at that level. Are there other members of the commission that like that to comment or a question?
I know all this has a system where you can go and you can put your email down, you can. Register online and have you registered, please send me presumably.
Yeah, that's we have that. They would share the link or not register in time, and then panic, because they get registered by three, because they cut off. So then once they start emailing everybody. I don't respond right away, Shelby didn't respond right away. City attorney, and I'm gonna sue you because you're not likely to have soon. Going to the mayor, it's going to. Just like a lot of. Yeah, surround that, and I would say counsel, they're not. Mostly not land use hearings, right, so if you miss a deadline, you can't speak at council, well, you missed your deadline, you can't speak at council. Little bit different for land use, that's just the, you know, ensure that people have their opportunities, so. It doesn't mean that it can happen, right, it can, but there, you know, bendy times maybe where I'm like. I was messaging with somebody in the chat, for somebody that's in the meeting waiting for their turn or whatever, that's, you know, all about, but. That's fine.
It might be too in the weeds, but if if we're looking at vegetarian options, and it's overtime, your staff to be. Planning your meeting here, or potentially extending the library hours for. You know, one day a week, basically, to add that on, then you're also improving the public amenity. But it's eight weeks. Maybe that's better offset of.
That might put a heart within a. We ought to hear that's. Super long, have to leave by a specific time.
They're pretty rare.
So, I I hear a couple things, and one is the concern about this specific location in the current environment that we're in. And I I one hundred percent agree with that, um, and I appreciate you bringing that forward, I think that we should change this. So I do not think that we should continue to be at the station. So, that that's where I'm gonna come on, okay? The second point uh kind of is the the clarity of the audio, when people come back to listen to it. Uh, I think that is a very serious issue, um, people should be able to hear the full conversation uh for the record. So I think that's probably something that we do have to address, just for people compliance issues. I'm I'm personally agnostic on uh whether we should go hybrid or not, just because. I would, I would really like to see some evidence from maybe if there's been studies out there or case studies or examples that show that hybrid really does generate. Additional participation, particularly from communities that are not. Typically participated, I think if there's any sort of research out there on that, that anyone can marshal, I think that would be very, very helpful. If they do feel, you know, my personal sense was participation did drop off. Uh, and so we have information coming from someplace that says that this is an effective tool, then I think we'd have a much different conversation about it. And I think we can start to push back a little bit on kind of the the technology money issue. If we have some good supporting documentation, that this achieves our goals, that would be, I guess that those are my three pieces of feedback. I know police station, figure out our recording issues so that we have accurate recordings, and then maybe a longer conversation. About whether or not we need to have a hybrid system. Does that seem responsive?
Uh, yeah, I see visual, I think, um. Two things, one one would be, um. Uh, my uneducated guess would be that any system that allows us to be more clearly understood would likely facilitate common engagement. Two, uh, I'd be happy to try to find that good research, um, I, you know, I'll tell you that. It will, it has been a important problem to communicate.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, so.
And and.
And people like me.
Right, no, so that's an access issue in terms like the physical, is that a physical access issue?
Yeah, but that that's one same with what I was trying to share, which is, I mean, if if access issue translates into people who otherwise would come. You know, can and don't. So.
Yeah, I guess I could, I could slice the access into into a couple of different pieces, I'm just trying to figure out which piece it is, like, I can't leave home cuz I have my kids. I have mobility issues, so I have a tough time getting to that specific place, like, those are different, we can tailor different solutions depending on what we're trying to do. So if there's a mobility issue, you know, I think there is a legal responsibility to try and address that. Right, so people shouldn't have to walk forty-five minutes from the bus stop to get here. Right, so that you could probably figure out a way to impress, whether that's by doing some better analysis in terms of where we have the site. You know, I don't know if we looked at bus routes, or, you know, I don't know if we had any sort of conversation about how to do that, and I don't think that we put out any information on how to accommodate that either. I don't know if that's part of like how we.
Find a room that's open on the nights that we need it.
Right, right.
If we were to move to a location, like if uh Marion County lets us use their room, I think that they do have microphones, and that fixes the audio. Issue, um, I think in chambers when we had the mics. It's not as clear as council, their mics are tied into the TV cameras, which picking up the audio, right? And so we didn't have those cameras, we have this camera, so our mics were just amplifying our sound in the room, which then made it easier for this camera to pick up. But still on some nights, where someone forgets to turn on their mic, or they leaned away from us, they're talking, so, you know, they were using. Once you went back. So, um, it's been an ongoing issue, there was no money for mics, there was no money for us to use CC media, um, it's like. Thirty thousand dollars a year, there was no money to use our cameras, it was all these different things I explored, no, no, no. Came back from, so before COVID, we just audio recorded the meetings with them. And so if you missed the meeting, we could send you the link to listen. So that's how it was done before, so when we came back, we were like, oh, we'll be. Right, we need video, and the and the laws that had to be on YouTube and stuff like that, so. I'm just saying that generally, there's been no money for. Kind of city support to solve this problem for us. Bought a camera and we use it, and that's what we. That's what we have so far.
I just have one more thing to throw in to muddy everything, um, just. The, we haven't discussed the value of commissioners' time, you know, and we're all volunteering to do this work. And we wanna be here, and we told council we would uh be here, uh, and so when. Like, I missed a meeting because I was sick, I watched a meeting live while I was sick, I didn't wanna get you all sick.
We appreciate that.
Yeah, and so just just an side benefit that we haven't touched on yet is that it makes more accessible for the people who are volunteering to do this work. Is that worth the staff time, another person would be here, that's something.
I mean, I think so, I would think so, I think when, uh, we had one meeting in like three, we just barely had forum. And it's like, well, that, you know, okay, we can have our meeting, check the box, we had our meeting, whatever, but is it fair that like half the commission's gone?
Right.
Right, and so I know some of you that are traveling, I could go if I could come on the Zoom, I would be happy to attend and participate, and they do that at council, obviously, you know, some more. More countries, and they get up in the middle of the night and that's important to them. Um, and and obviously, if somebody's sick, we have had a few staff people uh at HLC keep getting COVID. Uh, then maybe only that person to present, we let them present from home. To not cancel the meeting, right, um, but. We we do, the state law says, there's a new state law, it's past during COVID, or and then if you allow the decision makers, you have to allow a couple. So that's why we haven't. Like, oh, you're you're traveling, go ahead, you know, you're because we're not allowed. We don't wanna run it out of state law, um, goes back to what I said, the city attorney did say, he just made a request. To attend.
But I would say yes, generally, we want you all to be here.
Yes.
Meeting when you're home.
Yes, absolutely, working together in person is a much better outcome for long term.
And that'd be here, I mean.
Right, for the end, to be part of.
Right, right. I I feel like we've got, we have a couple of issues, we have, one is, you know, staff has been working very diligently to find an immediate solution to a pressing problem. Kind of wanna recognize that work had been done. Um, and also that there are still some concerns that need to be addressed, even though. You know, we had to rush to get this particular solution in place, so.
The first thing is we want a new location. I hear that loud and clear, new location.
Right, but but it can't just be, it just. Like, money can't just be, I know it is the factor, but it can't be the only factor when we're dealing with compliance and civil rights issues.
Yeah.
Right, and so the city attorney has to get a little bit, the budget managers have to be a little bit aware that our concern just isn't that. We have to not spend money, we have to be careful spending money, we also need to actually fulfill government's responsibility on on spending. My issues, and so I don't hear that just commissioner midco, or midco has a particular, but it's a representative issue. Of people with some ability challenges that we need to be responsible for everybody, so yes, so I think we've got, we want to make sure that you have the argument that you need to go back. And talk with folks about. And I do think if if people cannot hear our meetings, that's that strikes me as a legal violation, so I'm not gonna ask you to give me a legal opinion. But I do think we have that, we do have to have a legal, we do have to have a record of this, and I'm hearing that recently we haven't. So those two things seem to be like an immediate thing that we can address while we have the longer conversation about the hybrid. Conversation, cuz I think there's lots of different conflicting information and values and stories to take that one that we might can't do tonight, but. Sounds like we have two issues then. That we're all. Okay, so new space with functional audio and. Okay, that's, do you feel like you have the information you need from us?
Yes, start on that.
Okay.
Grow in our, we need more overtime hybrid option.
Put that piece off.
You can send them this clip.
And we can pass a resolution if it's helpful to you.
I don't think so, I don't, I clarify. I will say, we won't be able to move the location before the July fifteenth. If we just continue it to date, I'm certain. The case.
Don't be here.
Yes.
Okay.
So we will work on maybe if we can get something by August, or. Can get something, but they say not August, I guess I would wanna know. If we were able to secure a better location, but it couldn't be Tuesdays anymore. Would we entertain a different night?
Why don't we just go around the room about? I thought of that.
Me too.
Yeah, generally.
Generally, I mean, obviously, I didn't ask about particularly, but. It's always been Tuesdays, I feel like in the entire history of this city, but I hope not that it wants to be, can't be. Like, you know, like in council or whatever, but like. Wednesdays are hearings, officer, but that's also a different week, so. Are we, or could, you know, I'm just trying to think if we're trying to get a different.
Mr. Rhodes.
It depends on on which week.
Yeah, cuz you have standing meetings.
I have a lot of meetings anyways.
Okay.
Um, it depends on what, which which week in the month it is.
Okay.
But no one's opposed to the.
Generally. Okay, that sounds better.
Sunday afternoon. Yeah, 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 I will be there.
Okay.
All right.
Well, we'll get started on that. Like, we have a press. On all the things.
Well, I'm sure that we all have some, I'm sure this body has talented lobbyists that can come in and deploy.
Yeah, if I if I need help with this conversation. You're willing.
Yes, I think there are enough people here that would. Yes, yes, right, this is whining on our behalf. We're on our own behalf. That was a little spirit.
Okay, well, that was a really great conversation. No, I mean, it was really, it was really good, I got a lot of input and. Yeah. Impactation. And I didn't know that city meetings were happening then.
Maybe it's a secret that.
Well, it's not a secret now, cuz it's on YouTube, so. No, I was one, yeah, I think that's a really good location, so.
Tyler, more items to your report?
Are there more items? No, I don't think so, uh. It's not. We moved, we're trying to settle into our location.
At the same time.
As we're having hard and finding us. Signage necessarily, some other various things. Happening, yeah, I got stuck in the elevator today, but. It opened when I went back to the floor, I came from, so that's.
Okay, okay, you were trapped.
No, it just wouldn't open on one, it was like kick, kick. Okay, it's nice.
The old safe.
But the old tape, the older one.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I I, yeah, it's nice, it's much newer, nicer than.
Just like Salem, it's cute, sweet.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, no, I don't think I have any.
Do you wanna give us just a two-minute update on the um. How they production strategy, which I understood that the city passed, you sent out an email to everybody.
Yes, and then you just came to the last meeting, and I said, that's great, cuz I'll grill you about it, you just.
I don't have any questions, is there anything that anybody does have a question?
Oh, I can give them a little update, um, so yes, it was adopted, the council, like I said in my email, they made a motion to. Kind of have us push up the vote amendments, um, even though it was our first thing as far as the planning division was gonna work on, they wanted to make sure it was a priority. Uh, we already had a meeting with um developers, architects, engineers, land use consultants, uh, right? Like thirty people. And so we uh had some flipboards of, these are, we wanna focus on the zoning code, then go to the planning staff, right, we're like, these are the things. That we think for multi-family, for single family, for mixed use, for whatever, that we think could change based on analysis we did of zoning adjustments, people are requesting. That's real basic stuff that. In a mixed use zone, we're doing ground floor residential, apparently, you don't want sixty-five percent of the wall. Every time they ask for a dust-up, it's three days. Okay, we can change that, right, so we had all that, um, and then we got kind of their feedback, so what are your ideas, but uh I was. To our meeting, I would say an hour forty-five, and so it was a good process and not change the zoning code. Um, so we took notes of everything, uh, and then Eunice just sent out the summary today, and so we're gonna have a follow-up meeting. Say in three weeks, uh, so it wasn't a solutions meeting, we don't wanna talk about solutions. You have a problem, right, so we've done that, so now we're gonna go back and think, and so we think we can change, uh. I had some, I saw the agreement, but like, this is what we heard, and why we think it's a problem, we don't, it's a problem, we're gonna change what we're not gonna change. And then our next step would be to do outreach, because. Not just necessarily developers, it makes sense what the zoning code should be, right, there's reasons, there's certain standards, so we're gonna do some outreach, and then for the council uh motion, we're gonna bring a report back in. Like, November, early December, and say, this is what we heard, this will change based on that. Anyone? That's on that, so we're gonna have a process improvement report, uh, we've been doing. Two years work on process improvement, um, you know, merge with all the work staffs, development department. Um, they got it in the portal, and so you just have to email stuff to those folks, but everything else you upload, it's gonna all a mess of. Um, and then next week, we're gonna have a permit timeline dashboard, go live, so we get a lot of things about the time. Timeline, it's really, let's just. Have the data out there, so everybody can see the data, um, and. I think it looks really good, we're really fast. And then we have, you know, hey, I'm just permitted, it took this long, look how long it's with the city staff. And they're not all that way, but a lot, a lot of them on the more complex construction plan. And we have like a fourteen-day review for dwelling permits. Like, can we average ten days?
I have to imagine fourteen days is.
Fourteen calendar days.
Right, right, that's like an outlier in America.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're. So Ben, we copied Ben's dashboard, they have one, uh. Copy this, see, but they're, they're, we're much faster for for a lot of that stuff, so, um, I think there'll be other things we want to measure and show once we get like. First initial dashboard out there, um, some of it's not data we collect right now, so we're gonna, you know, we need some native information. Just fun, we're your staff, and that kind of stuff, but, um. Um, we're really excited about that, we've worked on that for a while, uh, that's part of the process of, which was part of the motion, so, uh, it went, goes live also next week. Forget it, and we're hoping Eunice has been calling people that didn't make the meeting to get their feedback, uh, you know, on the zoning code process, um. And so if you're. Practitioner or you're interested. Yeah, reach out, and if you didn't come to the meeting now. Just tell me the day of the, oh, thank you. Happy for you, one happy, not saying love at all, but there'd be five nice persons. I remember, they're obviously. Um. No, yeah, yeah, so, yeah, it is, it is really interesting, we're not publishing it yet, but for example, we get a lot of complaints about the time for subdivision. That's a lot of the questions at council, um, our Harvard intern did the uh timeline for structural permits for subdivisions. I would say like the last five years for like every subdivision, almost with the cities, so that would be, and it's, you know. The, I would say we were asked to not publish it by some of the engineers, because you can see on a specific application, how long it was with their firm versus with the city. And, and we're also, you know, we're also tracking rounds. Iterations, like, how many times have we asked more? I don't know that we're gonna publish it, we're probably. Together or something, or by year, uh, but we do have that data.
That might be a great presentation for the planning commission.
Yeah, that's part, that's part of what Robin would come back and present, you guys asked her to kind of present on process improvement, so. Uh, we're gonna choose for August for that. These are here in August.
I mean, we certainly have received public testimony that the city's speed is a problem.
Yeah.
And it would be useful if we had data on that.
Yeah, and um, you know, I don't wanna make it sound like, you know, oh, just, you know. They're terrible or great, cuz that's not always the story, uh, but it is sometimes like, well, yeah, I submitted incomplete plans cuz I just wanted my stormwater looked at. Okay, but then everyone else's works, you know. But I need more stuff, so there's another round. And another round, and each time they're only doing someone, and then finally you submit the other stuff, and then everyone has a confidence, now they're new confidence, right, so it's like some of that kind of stuff, and they. Um, and talking with engineers and development groups. It's a lot of different people that put together a package, you know, so. Oh, I did this part, but the arborist hasn't given me that, but I'm gonna submit it anyway, and you'll get that on the next round, and so some of that is like, six rounds, it's too many, and. Well, we don't have, have it all. We did introduce a pre-screening, so we said we wouldn't start, but she had a certain. That didn't go over well, as you might imagine, you know, people thinking they were gonna submit and be with the city, and then we were like, we're not even paying for it. So, uh, we're still trying to kind of work out the keys on. Some of that to be, you know, more clear about what you need, what you, what you. Um, maybe in the future, having. Reads of permit, okay, you can submit only for stormwater, and then you don't have to waste the planners' time to look at it, you don't have all the things or stuff like that, but.
But so that seems like a policy decision.
Yeah, I mean, I think some of it is, um. And I think having the data, uh, just to show the timelines. Is a good place to start, because we have it all, so if someone asks about a specific project, I can look it up, or Robin can look it up real quick and say, oh, well. Yes, on the first round, we said you don't have a stormwater report, they did four more rounds, we have a stormwater report, well, guess what, without that, we can't review this, so we just, same, same thing. And yeah, it's with us, you know, so like, we can look it all up, but to have it, I think kind of broader. Interesting. So I'll send it to you when it comes out next week, uh, and then. Robert's gonna come and say, I'm processing. People in August.
Question about single-stair stuff.
Yeah.
The UCCD wanted to email that it's a city, she, I see the counselor.
Yeah.
He had a written document, uh, but I'm kind of curious if. The discussion on single-stair structures. Did in this code update, uh, state structures code was amended. Uh, will be. Effective in October.
Yeah.
That allows single-stair structures.
Yeah.
Up to four stories, maximum, or even ten stories, or, or, I think the foreplate can be a maximum of six thousand square feet with some other. Requirements about electrical outlets and so on and stuff.
Yeah.
But. It requires the approval of the, uh, approval of the city's fire authority, so prior chief need to be involved in this process.
Okay.
You know, and I think that's a really easy win for the city to, you know, check the box to be good for priority. Cool, so. Uh, so, I, I think that would be a really deep. Do, I don't know, from the. Uh, by standpoint, how easy that would be to implement, I know the code that these would be constructed in the RMQs.
Yeah.
If the foreplate maximum size for these single-stair structures, six thousand square feet, and then a lot size that we would be building things on, just six thousand square feet.
Yeah.
And it's an RM2 zone. Which the density maximum would only allow you to build four blocks.
Yeah.
If it were six thousand feet, but wow. And. You can only build the one story.
Right.
So. I don't know what kind of. And also seems to be done to the code to allow us to know those kinds of structures. Just like to give you approval from prior chief. All that, our zoning code, speed, other requirements. Basically nullified because we can already build four classes, so, uh, I think that's, maybe that's like.
But if your lot was slightly bigger, you could build more story, and then. The stair that you can't do today, even if you're a lot big enough.
Yeah, but, you know, we're trying to do info in order to repeat our housing laws, you know, we don't have a lot of large lots. So if you've got a bunch of four thousand square feet lots that you can't otherwise build. Yeah. You know, if you have a developer, it's just something that you might have with this one. In your own single-stair structure, it can be a lot, sort of like parking or.
Yeah. Yeah, we're definitely looking at. Changing some of the building lot sizes and density in RM1, RM2, and potentially allowing more units in single-family. Um. In one building, so like now you have a twelve potage cluster, and I think, I'd say, well, they just changed it to say detached, or detached, which we already allowed, but.
Yeah.
So. Yes, accommodations for that, I don't know how. Or did they'll be, you know. But, yeah, and we have the top of the framework, so you have about.
Yeah, I mean, it was behind us, I mean, it would be nice if they could be able to take full advantage of the, or let people take full advantage of that four-story. So it's allowed by the OSSC if they wanna take. Those four stories.
Yeah.
Uh. But, we just like us.
Yeah. Great.
Do you think it would merit a conversation at some other night, maybe put on the agenda about, uh. Uh, density maxims. It seems like density maxims is a potential issue.
I don't know.
I don't know.
Uh, well, okay, so maybe for a really tiny lot. And generally, people don't, opposed to. We now.
So you're gonna have to require me.
Yeah.
Just strengthen the.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, I have a little lot.
Have we considered going towards more form-based code?
It's just really a lot of work.
Yeah.
Really far from where we're at, so yes, I know. Really every planner's dream, that's the new form-based code.
Yeah.
Like, oh, I can think of everything.
Yeah, cuz I mean, just like. You think about like those four-story, those stair structures, I've seen them all over West Portland, they look nice.
Yeah.
But like. The density on those is like, you have a few of them in there.
Yeah, yeah.
But the density on those is up to eighty-six minutes per square foot.
Yeah.
Per, per acre.
No, and, yeah.
Yeah. But, uh, um, but, you know, as you've got a thing like that, somebody might. You know, build the structure for a lot, or maybe, I don't know, so. I don't know how we can, you know, go to the neighborhood and say, we want to. Maybe it's just density, or maybe it's just height of setbacks, but. Uh, maybe we don't need the density on it.
But I think you could manage it with setbacks and landscaping, you know, creating infrastructure requirements that would. Also help to offset, you know, the. The pretty, uh. Yeah. Completely filling a lot, but. Okay, we talked about, like, can we just not have a minimum density and just basically say, here's the box.
I, that's kind of what I was thinking when I said for finish code, I don't know if that's.
Are you talking about minimum densities or maximum density?
Maximum.
Okay, you're saying minimum.
Yeah, for a small lot, it's gonna be maximum, but for most marble, it can only.
Minimum density. Right. I feel like. I feel like there's some additional work that needs to happen to make this conversation more productive.
Yeah, I think we can have Eunice come, um, and, and present.
But I wonder if we should do like a work session.
That's what I mean, like, a work session. Uh, presented. Or what feedback you can. Uh, well, CD.
Yeah, I think, I would think the goal would be something like, how do we? How do we, what, what are the barriers and potential solutions for expanding middle of housing in existing neighborhoods?
Yeah.
Does that seem like what we're trying, it's like, kind of figure out?
Maybe we're gonna work in, though, or something like that. But maybe, I don't care.
So a work session on something like that.
That's. Really exceeding middle housing, so.
A small, small apartment building.
Yeah.
And I know there is a new state law, but I think it got passed, where the state is providing, like, it's like templates. Drawings, I hope they dropped it up for anywhere between four classes all the way to small apartment buildings, all the way to like twelve. Testing units, I think. Yeah.
Um.
No, I don't, it's just a middle, I was like, this is a small apartment building, might be. Also in for an existing neighborhood, but I think by state statute, it's not considered housing, so.
And are they looking at. Hand that lot size, I mean, I mean, uh, a lot be able to be divided up into small lot sizes, so if you did build a four-block, then you'd be able to sell. Yeah, so you're gonna probably do that through the middle housing land division, so you can, if you build middle housing and it meets the requirements when you build it on a lot, or the. Duplex, triplex, crotch bust, or whatever, or attached whatever units, then you can come in, you can do the same type of supplement or after. And do the housing land division, you don't have to be lot size, you don't have to test, you don't have to have like flat lot and that kind of stuff, you just have to have utilities and. Excelsis, it's Rachel. Folks, you've done your utilities separately, so we've done a couple of them, Mark, haven't you done one?
I've done one, uh, the link code is also. Spent some proxy to property. Yes, I, I have done a middle house and land division. With that, there's a requirement for certain fire rating for the structure. Based on the distances to property. So developers need to keep that in mind to develop those kind of structures. Make sure that meets those requirements for fire rating in addition to separate utilities.
So generally, somebody tells us when they come in, when they want to do middle housing, they also want to divide it, cuz they know right then that they wanna. Sell them, that they want, that the product they want to do, so, um, again, they can submit at the same time where they do the. You know, the permitting for that, and then the land division afterwards, I wanna say we've done three or four so far. Two, you did one, Peter did one.
Peter's completely.
And was it, uh, how many units?
Mine was a duplex being two townhouses.
Okay, right, so.
Well, Peter was, I think, this doesn't. Four.
Four, yeah, I think that was four, we've had other people ask, so. It, yeah, it's starting, yeah. Yeah.
The difficulty is that some people want to remain, um, certain units on, multiple units on a single unit land. And it needs to be each unit, each resident. Needs to be on a separate unit plan.
So if you came and built like three separate, you couldn't say, I want these two to stay together, and this one necessarily, those two, like, the. Standards, so.
You would first have to do a partition and then want to divide it.
But most of the people doing middle housing are wanting to do rental products, so they're not trying to divide, and the biggest thing is, do you want your utilities together or separate, you know? Want utility builder. Two. And I'd say most of the time. People want to do middle housing. They can do with anyone. There's not a lot of like, oh, everybody wants to do this, but they can't do it, they just tend to. Do it, like, yeah, you could do that. Let's know, submit your permits, you know, like, it's, it's, uh, pretty pervasive. Uh, I think the state law required, didn't require us to allow detached units, those we did would be in DAF, so you didn't, so if you do a triplex, you don't. Three units together, but we said, or it could be three detached, so like, for a house, and they. Buy a duplex plan and put that in the backyard. They have a screen, so. It's making it easier. I don't know, middle housing hasn't been the big, you're talking about in a higher level than, uh, I would say, general middle housing standards. We're not getting a lot of feedback on things, but need to change to the votes, except.
Yeah.
ADU for townhouses should be out there. Here, here, so.
Probably there is, but we're not getting a lot of feedback on these things. I was hoping that the president, the doctor, we can, you know. Uh, I know, we're like, especially the smaller scale, or I would say the city book or scene books need building, you know, so the Seattle. Or Minneapolis, or cities that are. Kind of surgery.
Oh, well, that's a big story, it's a big farewell, yeah.
Yeah.
I got a lot.
There's a lot of market difference between. Say, well.
Yeah, obviously, but, I mean, we've, we've built them hundred years ago, um, so obviously there is some kind of market and that, and, uh. Really, it's a new type of housing, uh. I told the, I believe that's, there are all of those kind of characters are actually really different than standard. You know, apartment. Unit, you might get it, uh, through the wood or wherever you got windows on. Two, maybe three sides of almost every unit, you know, they feel more like a, uh, because it's. Just don't have to do those on one side of your.
Yeah.
Yes, even more general. Threatening these out, or, or using them, uh, the limited long-term.
Yeah.
Uh. It's very, we're, you know, you know, three bedrooms and.
Well, they haven't been allowed at all in Oregon, right?
Yeah.
Need the elevator, so it's gonna be into.
Yeah.
Environment, so we'll see, I have to stay with, market, right?
We have a, we have a way to do the, just like I'm saying, if somebody wants to own one of these. Uh, somebody's, you know. Wanting a unit on top of.
They forgot their condo. Turn it to condo, okay, which doesn't come.
So we're agreeing to a work session?
Yeah.
And we'll call it middle housing plus.
Sure.
Sure.
All right, we can have the middle housing conversation, and then you have some interest in a higher capacity, higher density. Options that fall short of kind of where for current large. Three, four, huge. Okay. Other questions?
Might be September, probably, probably September.
So that means we might have two meetings in a month.